All right. We'll now call the City Council's Special Budget Workshop to order for August 25th at 4:30 PM. Please rise for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will give my Deputy Mayor, Jim Bernard. Maybe seated? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call a roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire, here.
Councilmember Mercury, here.
Councilmember Taylor, here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard, here.
Mayor Anderson, here. We have a form.
Thank you. Item number four, we'll start off with the General Fund Budget Revisions. Looks like Melody, you're in the hot seat.
Okay. So we are here tonight to discuss the changes that we discussed at the last budget workshop, which are implementing the $180 fee for the fire assessment. We actually got our new insurance in and it went from a 72% increase down to a 25.3% increase. So with the general fund, we have increased the revenue by 158,000 and we have increased the, or decreased the expenses by 39,000. So the, the increase for the insurance, we actually budgeted 15%, so there's a 10.3% increase in the budget with the, the new rate at 25.3%. So our increases for the health insurance is 32,000. We actually made a couple of decreases. We decreased the city clerk position pay range and we actually decreased in code enforcement from three foreclosures to one and from two demos to one. So we decreased our expenses by 39,890. So if you look at the bottom of the page, our loss after the ROI is actually a positive. We're balanced in that budget. After our capital, we take out 675,000.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none? Moving on.
Okay, our wastewater fund, the only change that we made was the increase to the health insurance. That only increased $5,790. We had a couple of employees that we included their insurance in, but they have either Medicare or Medicaid or other insurance outside the city. So we removed them. So that's why that is such a small increase. So our income after the return on investment for the wastewater fund is just over a million dollars. With all of our capital, we'll be taking about 6.3 million out of reserves.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing none? Moving on.
Okay, in the sanitation fund, we adjusted the garbage rate to $28 a tote, which is an increase of $54,610. We increased the dumpster rates by 10%, which is an increase of $70,000. And we increased again the health insurance and we actually decreased overtime expense in the sanitation fund and removed one truck rental. So we decreased expenses by $234,000.
I have a couple of questions about that one, if you don't mind. For the decrease with the overtime, how are we able to just erase $78,000 worth of overtime?
The way the department's been working in the past, they actually work holidays. They're not going to work those holidays, say Thanksgiving, Christmas. They'll either push a day or it just won't be picked up at that time on a holiday.
Okay, so it will actually be fewer hours that are worked?
Correct, but it won't be double time and a half hours.
Right.
They might come in on a Saturday to do it, but it would be, it would be at regular hours, not double time and a half.
Okay. And then the only other question, which these would be like nominal changes, but the actual sanitation, the pickup for the commercial dumpsters. I went through, I looked up a lot of other cities and they usually will just charge a per cubic yard per pickup. So like if they had a four yard dumpster and they got it picked up twice, then that's eight times whatever their, their rate is. So I tried to decipher in our little chart, how much we were charging and decreasing and increasing and things like that. There didn't really seem to be any kind of rhyme or reason to any of it.
Yeah. So we did a little bit of research on that today and the, the last time the rates were increased was 2000, we said nine, but it was actually 2011. And we cannot determine how they came up with the amount either. And then when Jason Atkinson, you know, brought forward the rates last year, he just did a 10% across the board increase.
Right, yeah. So I, I threw in some calculations and stuff like that, just to try to make it where it seemed like at least it was an equitable increase or decrease. Obviously, if you get picked up more times, you've got a slight break on, on the rate. But I know there had been a conversation last year about providing some kind of a break that would encourage individuals or encourage businesses to get a larger dumpster picked up fewer times. Would that benefit the city as far as saving time, money, wear and tear on trucks? In other words, if they had a four yard and they picked it up twice versus a two yard picked up four times?
Yeah, in theory, I mean, you obviously have less miles on the truck going back and forth to pick it up with fewer pickups. You have less travel to the dump for mileage up to the county. Still gonna pay the same amount of dump fees if it's the same amount of trash.
Right, yeah. My, my concern was more of the, you know, we had so much overtime and stuff like that in there and then also the, the trucks you said were on their last legs. So I was trying to extend that out as far as possible, but maybe that's something we need to look into. The four yard dumpster seemed to have, that was the one that was the most off. It was like $2 less per cubic yard as opposed to the two yard. But then when you went back to six, it was almost the same as two and then eight was more than six and it was just kind of all over the place. So I kind of used your, your rates for two and I used your rates for eight and then I split the difference between four different categories and then tried to categorize it to where at least it made a little bit more sense. But I think we should investigate, I don't know how many four, six and eight yard dumpsters that we have out in the city. Are the majority of them two or the majority four, or is there a good mixture between all four of them?
I'm not sure how many of each. We'd have to look that up and bring it back to you.
Okay. Well, I can, I can give you these, these numbers that I came up with and if you, you know, this, this doesn't take into any, any, into account any kind of incentive for them to go bigger fewer times, which I know some businesses won't want to do that if they have like a lot of food or something that's gonna be, you know, stinky and stuff like that. But a lot of businesses just have a lot of cardboard and packing materials and, and things that it wouldn't matter if it sat there for two or three days versus getting picked up every day.
Well, Brittany, I'd like to piggyback off that. I know I've talked to a couple of businesses, when I say a couple, I'm talking two or three, that, you know, I see what you're saying where you get a bigger, the city pick up less, possibly the city pay less. But the one that they have is too big. They don't fill it up enough for it to be picked up twice. So for the, for, to think that they're gonna get something bigger and they're not even using the one that they have where it needs two.
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be mandatory.
No.
They don't have to get something bigger.
My question is, I'm, my question is, how many of those? I'm only talking to two or three, but how many of those within the city that would be willing to, you know, just by us asking, to go up to something bigger if they're not even using what they have? Or that was just, that was just a thought to think about.
Right, well, if they're getting picked up five times and it's never full, then, you know, maybe ask them if they want to go down to four or three. If, like I said, some businesses want to be picked up every day regardless of it, if it's full or not because of what they have in it. You know, if it's, I don't know, a dog grooming place or a nursing home or some of those, you know, where the stuff that you're throwing away maybe needs to be picked up on a regular basis. But I think we could go to any of the ones getting picked up three to five times and ask them if they're interested in going bigger but fewer pickups to see how much money we could save. And then the prices would need to reflect that. I would say they would need some kind of an incentive.
Well, if we, our increases are 10% across the board, if they call up and say, I just want mine picked up once a week instead of twice a week, will we just give them a 10% deduction in the rate?
Well, there's, there's already a rate for that, so they would just go down to the lower rate. But right now, none of the rates make sense. So it's, some of them go down a dollar eighty, some of them go down 22 cent. Like there's no rhyme or reason. So if we have a lot of fours, then I think we're fixing to get a lot more revenue because that was the one that was calculated the most incorrectly as far as per, and I broke it down per cubic yard and all that kind of stuff, so y'all can see it and see what's gonna make sense.
Melanie, do you know how many businesses get more than, wait a minute, let me rephrase that. The majority of the businesses, are they one pickup, the majority of them, or are they more than one?
I don't know the answer to that. Lee, do you know?
We'll have to get you in a microphone there. See if that light's on, on that microphone?
Okay. Lee Bostick, sanitation supervisor. Of course, you have like your schools and your restaurants that we do daily, five times a week and that's probably mostly what we have as far as commercial. But we do have quite a bit of one time a week, two time a week commercial properties that we do pick up. Other than that, we, we rarely have any three times, four times a week. Most of it is, like I say, the restaurants and the schools daily. Then we have one, quite a few one times a week, two times a week.
So you think the majority of the time is just the, the, the schools is the, the most pickups?
The, the restaurants.
The restaurants and the schools?
Restaurants, yes.
Five.
Those are daily.
Okay, so outside of those, how many do you think is one pickup or more? Like is it the majority of?
Majority, yes.
Is one pickup?
One or two, yes. Majority is one or two.
And, and I have a question for Lee. Lee, have you got any complaints from anybody that, I, I know probably not because you'll probably tell them, you know, if you need more pickup, then maybe you need to get a bigger container. Have you received any of that? Like, you know, I'm, I'm picking up once a week and it's really not enough? Have you got any of that?
Over like the past two or three years, I've just seen, received a couple of them. Not, it's not often.
When you say a couple, you're talking?
Uh, two or three. It's often. That's over the past two or three years.
That they thought that it, it, they think that they should have it picked up more?
Yes.
Okay, and you never like told them, maybe you should get a bigger dumpster or anything like that? You just?
I, I, I will suggest a bigger dumpster or, you know, kind of strength, trying to strengthen their resolve according to their finances or what have you. So sometimes it's, you may want to go to a four yarder instead of a two. Or sometimes it's, you could actually get it picked up more than once a week, more than twice a week, what have you, you know? So that way they can ponder on it and they can get back with me and/or Karen and then we can do what we need to do from there.
Mr. Bostick, do you guys charge for overages? If you find that a dumpster is completely full, over the top dumping onto the road, do you, do you charge?
We have not been, no.
Okay, I don't know if maybe that's something we could check into because I know that the company that I use at my office, if, if it's over the top and the lids don't shut, they charge us for overages.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if that's something that we want to, you know, check into, but.
Well, uh, Lee, you said that we don't charge, but do you see that a lot?
I don't see it often, no. I don't see it a lot.
Not a lot.
But you see it.
I have seen it.
Seen. Okay, and so if, if somebody has a four yard or a six yard and they find that, oh man, I need to get another pickup out here for whatever reason, how much is that if they just call for extra pickup in the week?
Extra pickup is the same price as a regular pickup.
Okay.
So, for instance, if it's Thursday and it's not your day for a pickup, but you need a pickup, they would call in to Karen or myself and we, we would get in touch with the driver and say, hey, extra pickup for whomever. And of course Karen is already there to put it in the system. If, if they call me, I'll get with Karen and let her know, hey, charge them for an extra pickup, which would be the regular price for a pickup.
And do you get that call a lot?
Yes.
A lot?
Yeah. It's often. I, I, a lot, I don't know, you know, but it's very often. Very often.
So if it is happening often and those people should probably go ahead and schedule an extra pickup, that way you have it in your schedule?
Would be, for, I don't want to call them the name of a company. Certain company will call today for an extra pickup. Then it might be two months later, they want an extra pickup. But when they call, then there's another place that is calling for an extra pickup.
Right.
So, you know, it, it's not necessarily the same place all the time. It kind of varies from this place to that place, to that place, to that place.
And then I know when we talked about it last year, we talked about any of the dumpsters that are located near the roads. People putting trash in them that is not supposed, it's not, in other words, the trash doesn't belong to that business.
Right.
And then how are you proving, like when you were saying the overages and stuff like that? If it's not in a locked area, which it can't be, because then they can't have access to it.
Right. Some, some do have them in locked areas.
Okay.
Because they know when they pick up, they do.
Right, and what they'll do is make sure they unlock it before the truck gets by. And they do have the ones, the dumpsters with the lock bars already on them.
I saw one of those.
That costs a little bit more for us to order them.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that's something we can do, but it just costs a little bit more.
So is your schedule just with commercial pickup, is it a full-time, five days a week?
Yes, absolutely.
Is it over that?
No. Yeah, it's, it's not over it. It, right now it is because most of the time we only have one truck in operation. The other one is usually down being repaired, which causes the driver to, you know, have to go to the landfill and he gets off a little later than his eight hours. When both trucks are in operation, he can kind of maneuver so that way he could get off in his eight hours and it wouldn't affect any overtimes or anything like that.
So if one of the trucks is down, is that one of the ones that we're renting on a regular basis? Or is that something else?
We're not renting any.
We don't rent any of those, okay.
That is one of the ones that I would want to get if we were approved.
So, so Lee, let me make sure I understand you right. With both vehicles in operation, it's a full-time day?
Yes.
And when one, we gonna occur overtime?
It's gonna be overtime, yes.
Every time?
Every time. Because what happens is the landfill opens at 7:00 AM. The, the driver comes in at five. He starts at five. So if that truck is full the night before, he can't start at five. He has to wait until seven, which is gonna set, set the route back two hours. So he has to go at the end of the day to the landfill to empty the truck. So by the time he gets back, it's, he's in overtime. But when there are two trucks in operation, he'll go out and start the route. That truck will get full. He'll come back and get the other one. And a lot of times I have the opportunity to have another driver to take it and dump it out. So that doesn't cost any overtime. And then sometimes he'll actually have the opportunity to maybe dump it out the next day.
All right.
So a, a couple of comments, if I may. We did account for the extra overtime for that one commercial driver in this budget. That wasn't part of the overtime that was taken out. If you want us to continue to look at the dumpster rates for commercial a little longer and bring that back to you, we can. It's 70,000 in revenue, but we have 120,000 cushion. So we would still have 50,000 if we don't adopt those as part of this budget and do it at a later date. We're still okay to move forward with what you have in front of you.
How, when do we have to have the budget passed? What's the deadline?
Tonight, I would like to have everything in order because when we come to the meeting on the 8th, it should be no discussion really. It's just a administrative function to pass the budget. Unless we want to schedule another meeting.
Before the? Goal that you're trying to get to?
I just want the rates to be equal across the board instead of being so scattered. I would like for the?
Per yard, you're saying?
Yeah, for, well, it doesn't even have to be the same number per yard, but I would like to kind of dig into some numbers and see how many that we have that are being picked up four and five times a week. Because if we can reduce that and give them bigger cans with a financial incentive just to take the load off, so if one of their trucks does go down, it would reduce that overhead or that overtime cost as well in addition to the wear and tear on the trucks, so maybe they won't go down quite as much. So I still want to dig into those rates a little bit better, a little more.
And Brittany, how would we notify those businesses that we're offering bigger trucks for lesser pickup time? How would we notify them?
I guess how we would notify about anything else, website, Facebook, maybe water bills, I'm not sure.
How would we notify them, Dr. Kelly? Maybe that's a question for you.
I'm sure our billing system can identify which businesses those are and, you know, we could reach out to them.
You mean like phone call?
Well, it would depend on how many there are. I mean, if there's like 500, that would be a little much for staff to reach out. But, you know, we could add something into their bill, their monthly bill, that that's an option.
Do you know how many commercial? Email, we could email them. We can put a notice on the bill.
Do you know how many commercial dumpster accounts we have?
Probably close to 300 if not more. But we also have to look at as well, if they're gonna downsize and or upsize, the cost is gonna be for us to ordering more dumpsters.
Okay.
You know, because they aren't cheap. There's, there's gonna be a.
So what does the cost usually run?
It varies on size. I can't remember exactly off the top of my head, but.
Like hundreds or thousands?
Oh, hundreds.
Hundreds.
Hundreds. I think the biggest one, the eight yard is about 600 or so per dumpster.
Okay, do we have extras now?
We have extra four yarders. We have extra six yarders. I'm out of two yarders and eight yarders, which normally happens at the end of the budget.
But we have extra fours and six, I think it would still be, you know, worth looking at.
So, so Lee, according to the businesses that we have, I, I know you may not know the answer, but which one of these dumpsters that is used the most? What size?
So going back to the restaurants and the schools, the eight yarder.
The eight yard?
Yes.
And we don't have any of those?
Not at the moment, no.
The eight yard can't go bigger anyway, so they get eight yard, they have to stay eight yard.
Usually when I order them, they go. Because that, again, we, when they go bad, we have to replace them.
They go bad often?
They get rusty and, you know, over a period of time. So if I put a new one out today, it won't be at a time this year that that goes rusty.
But they may go rusty next year?
At least a year and a half or so. And, and again, it depends how often and what's being put in there. You know, because a lot of restaurants got food and they just throw it in there and it, you know.
Yeah.
So do we have any customers that have two dumpsters on site, like two sixes or two fours?
Yeah, we have like apartment complexes, restaurants, again, some restaurants have two. A lot of the schools have two. It's not any of your, I don't want to say regular businesses, but you know, it's not any of the mom and pop businesses or anything like that. It's normally like the schools, restaurants, apartment complexes, things like that.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none? Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Moving on.
So this slide just shows the sanitation department. With the 70,000, we would be 120,000 to the good. If we take that 70 out, we'll still be 50,000 in the black. And then your last slide is the, this is what gets posted in the paper for the residents to see. So this is what'll be passed when we come to the tentative and final hearing. So this budget is based on the six mil, the 180 thou, or $180 fire assessment and the new $28 residential tote.
Any questions? Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Um, I have a question, Mayor. This is for Melanie. Melanie, or Dr. Kelly, whichever one. I've had the pleasure of talking to some of Dr. Kelly's employees in regards to the budget. And this budget is gonna affect next year's, right? In the 25, 26, right? And so, is it, it gonna to affect the sanitation's job? That budget, that particular budget?
No.
No. So, when we was talking about privatization, what year were we talking about?
We were talking about doing an RFP to see what that cost would look like. We talked about splitting it out between residential and commercial. Maybe the city would keep commercial and farm out residential. But that would all be a function of what came back through the RFP. It would be brought before the council and you all would make that decision then.
Okay. I, maybe I misunderstood them. They, they were being called in our office by human resource about, about, about their job?
No, ma'am. I, I think there was some concern amongst the employees when they heard the RFP discussion about contracting it out and they took it upon themselves to reach out to human resources who then had a meeting with them and said, you know, this is all very premature. Here's what was discussed. I have personally talked to several of the drivers myself. They, they know that we have been able to cover the costs with, within the enterprise fund itself. To their credit, they have some great ideas that we're gonna talk about this week going forward and how they can be more efficient and how we can save money in that department. So they've been very helpful.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So on, on that thought, are there other departments that we can have those same conversations with? Because I, I think that's amazing. I mean, if, if you want to know really where to save the money, it's to go talk to the actual department, so.
Right, you know, it's been a little difficult not having a public works director. So that would typically be the person that would be having those conversations, but I've been having them with the employees.
So regardless of if we pass a budget now, if we find those cost-saving measures, we can revise it and go ahead and implement those now rather than waiting until next year.
Yeah, definitely. So a, as you know, the budget's a living document. It's just a, a broad path of how we get through the next year, but that doesn't mean we can't change it as we go.
Okay. There's two other things on the budget that I kind of wanted to revisit. One is the grant writing position. I talked to you in your office about consulting out with another company and things like that. Have you found out any information as far as that's concerned?
No, not yet.
Okay. Rather than budgeting for an actual grant writer, I would like to consult with some companies first or even do an RFP for a grant consulting company rather than having an in-house person.
Uh, I, I'd like to ask Brittany the question, why that? Uh, uh, I, I'd like to ask Brittany um the question um why that is? Instead of having our own in-house, you would like to have a contract?
I, I feel like a company would have more connections and more opportunities as far as the, the big grants. An in-house grant, grant writer may be able to manage the grants um and maybe get some of the smaller ones or the more well-known ones, but I feel like a company would have maybe more of a network that they could reach out. And then also I had talked to a couple of individuals and um they said there are companies that will do it on, like a contingency fee. So in other words, if they get you a big dollar grant, then that, that's when they get paid versus you providing them with a salary all year and not really having any kind of guarantee that they're gonna secure you a grant.
Okay, so-
Um, how do you feel about that, Dr. Kelly?
I'm happy to do whatever the will of the council is, so I, I was just gonna say, if that's the direction you all would prefer to go, I'm, you know, we can certainly modify this and take it out for the final hearing.
I guess the question I'm asking you, Dr. Kelly, I know it's our decision, but your personal experience that you would think would be best for the city, your experience, that your expertise that you bring to the table?
I'm gonna say that if we can find a company not to, that only, that doesn't just write grants for us, but somebody that can manage it and take that burden off of staff that's already overburdened with their current responsibilities, that I'm, I'm happy to do that too. My, my concern is to try to alleviate the stress that staff is currently dealing with by having to have all of this in addition to their regular duties. It's the finance department.
But, but I have an opinion on that also. I, I think the advantage of having an outside consultant is that if the, if they do it for multiple cities, then they know how to write a grant for a ticker object for city aid, then they can actually do the same thing for Avon Park and City C and D because they've already written grants like that. So if you have a group, a, a one consultant or a group of consultants that are writing them for other cities, as, you know, then they turn around, they have the experience to write the same thing for our city depending on the size and the advantage. So I think that's a lot more accessible because they have that experience, cuz that's what they do. Or if you bring it to a city employee, then you're also paying the benefits and then you're putting them in an office and just uh, I, I think that um we may even be able to find somebody who was a grant writer and then maybe recently retired and would be willing to do it like part-time and maybe a part-time person could do a, a good job as anybody working full-time. And uh, and like, whether we pay it by fee or pay it by whatever, I think it's something we definitely should look at, that option before we put it into the budget and hire another employee with benefits.
Yeah, cuz I, I know a lot of the companies too, they can even, you know, write as part of the grant, this administration and management fee, so then we're not paying anything additional out of pocket. All we're doing is paying whatever the percentage is or the, a lot of times they'll charge like a five percent admin fee. And so then we're only paying five percent of whatever they have gotten for the city. If they get us a huge grant, then it's gonna be worth that five percent for them to not only write it for us and then manage it for us as well.
They don't make us money, they don't get paid, so.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, the funding agencies will not speak to our coordinators. They ha, they have to speak to a city employee, so there's always a liaison.
Okay.
And Dr. Kelly Fox can't write grants for us?
He does write grants for us.
Can't do all of our grants?
That, no, he, he has a specific CBPG.
And, 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 and he has a specific, cuz that's the specific that he only writes? Or can we renegotiate, renegotiate the contract? No, I'm asking, no?
Yeah, I think he just does CBPG for it out.
It's probably in specialty, I'm guessing.
Yeah. And then Kimley Horn helps us a lot too with water, wastewater stuff.
Yeah, dollar, dollar for dollar, Kimley Horn's probably gotten the most in recent years, wouldn't you say?
Right.
So then the money that we're paying Kimley Horn and Fox, wouldn't that wash out a grant writer? I mean, I'd like to see somebody in-house because then they're one hundred percent devoted to doing only that, looking for grants. I'm afraid if we get a big company, um is the big company gonna watch out for the larger cities and give them the most grants? Because they've got the more money, most money, or are they gonna watch out for Avon Park's best interests?
I think they're gonna watch out for the one that they're gonna get a percentage off of. And the thing about having an in-house person is you've heard them say that they're already bogged down with the management aspects. If we hire somebody, I guarantee you the majority of their time is gonna be spent managing the grants and not researching new grant funding opportunities.
I'm, I'm not an expert at grant writing at all, but I, what I do know about grant writing is that because the size of the city like Avon Park is a lot eligible for certain types of grants because of, um, cuz we're now considered uh, you know, a big time, high-end city. They're looking for billions of dollars to build a highway. We're looking for a million to build a wastewater project, something like that. So I think size of Avon Park has a lot more access to some smaller, multiple types of grants than having, looking for somebody who's trying to find something that's in the billions of millions, so.
Right.
Uh, it's, it's something, at least look, give it an option, at least look at both options. Let's see what we get.
Right.
All right.
And then um the other thing is for the memorial lighting. I know you don't, I won't like this for these, but um I would really like to see that go into or come out of the CRA, CRA South Side budget only because I reached out to Dr. Kelly, she reached out to Duke, and we will get a discount on that hundred and eighty thousand that they were, that she initially had budgeted because we get part of the construction fees off based on the usage that they're, they're going to incur. And I feel like that's like a guaranteed project that we could put in very quickly within, you know, a month or two and get it up and running. And then some of those other projects that, you know, maybe we, we could come off the price just a little bit for the CRA South Side, um like the gardens, maybe, and this may be a question for Jessica. But maybe come off of those prices just a little bit, and I feel like those projects may or may not happen within that first year, but this lighting, I feel like that would be an automatic, let's just, you know, get it done type of a deal.
So you saying take it off the CRA budget?
No, put it on the CRA.
Uh-huh.
So to come out of the CRA South Side budget versus coming out of the infrastru, it's in the infrastructure budget?
Structure, and uh like I said, um, I, I, Brittany, I, I hear what you're saying. We're trying to balance the budget here, but um I just feel this though, and I said it at the last meeting and I'm gonna say it again. I think the South Side CRA, we should get some of our wants too, and those, I look at those, those are some of our want.
Yeah, I, I think there's quite a few wants on there cuz you're, you're, the South Side budget grew, what, like twice as much as normal? I mean, there's like eight hundred and something thousand in the, the South Side budget. And I feel like, you know, lighting is a big thing that's gonna make a positive impact immediately. Even the lighting that was mentioned going through the neighborhoods and things like that, I feel like that's a very positive, quick impact that can help a lot of people. Um, I feel like we should focus on those things and go ahead and take care of it out of the South Side CRA versus taking out of the infrastructure fund since there is plenty of funds in there.
Mm-hmm, I, I get that.
If it was the same amount that was there last year or the same, you know, then I might think a little bit differently, but I feel like with the big, the extra influx of how much money went into that budget, I feel like we, it would be more wise to use the South Side CRA funds to purchase those lights than the infrastructure fund.
And I don't agree with you. I think the South Side has a right to go into the infrastructure budget as well as any other side of the city. And so, no, I'm, I'm not agreeing with that. Um, the South Side hasn't seen a whole lot of nothing happen in a whole lot long time. And I think, and, and even though we calling it the South Side, South Side ain't the only one that use Memorial. I mean, everybody's gonna be, everybody who lives in the city is gonna benefit. So I don't wanna like to say the South Side is the only one that's really gonna benefit from it, cuz it's not.
Well, I didn't say that. Everybody would, I-
One else in the South Side says, think that South Side is the only one that's gonna be benefiting.
Right, but that's the only fund we can take it out of based on where it is located. If it was, if there's a Main Street project that is in the infrastructure fund, if there's an airport project that's in the infrastructure fund and we can move it to CRA funds, I wanna use CRA funds, which is what I've said from the beginning. So are there any projects that are identified in the infrastructure fund that are for the Main Street or Airport?
We moved a couple of the parks projects over. Um, I don't have that in front of me. Give me a minute, I'll pull it up.
I know there was a shade sale, but I don't know if that's in one of the CRA districts or not. I know there was mulch. So which fund is that in, or which district is that in?
The shade sale was in South Side.
Okay, so that one's coming out of the infrastructure already, correct? Um, what about the mulch, the engineered mulch for that other park?
I don't remember which park that was for.
But if there are any projects, take it out of the CRA funds rather than spending the other, the infrastructure funds on those projects.
And since we only have a few minutes left, maybe you can take some time and identify them and then bring them to us and or, or we actually consider the budget?
I got an answer.
Oh, you have it?
Good.
Okay.
Central Ave Park improvements were moved to infrastructure. McWhite's uh sale, shade sale was moved to infrastructure. MLK Sports Complex, uh Firdapp is in there as well, as well as the um other Firdapps that we were applying for. And the AC replacement for the community center is also in the-
Can the Firdapps be funded through CRA?
They're a hundred percent, going to be a hundred percent funded by Firdapp.
By Firdapp.
So what, but we still have to include those in the budget just-
Correct.
When applying for the Firdapp, but you're not anticipating us using all of that money?
No, it's just in there as a wash so that we have it as a hold to get the points for the applications.
Then the Firdapp would be irrelevant for this conversation. So the non-Firdapp ones, what sort of dollar amounts do you have there?
And which ones can be you, can be paid for with CRA funds?
Uh, the Central Ave Park improvements, fifty thousand, that's on Main Street.
Okay.
Uh, the shade sale, that's South Side, eight thousand.
Those are the only two?
I don't think the um-
So the Community Center HVAC, I think it has to pose a health risk in order for it to qualify for CRA funds. Does it pose a health risk? Does it work? If it doesn't work, it poses a health risk in Florida.
Sounds like a Jerry question to me.
Didn't it just get replaced? Are you talking about the Boys and Girls Club?
No, Community Center.
Center, oh, I'm sorry.
It does work. It's just really old and needs to be replaced.
So that may or may not, but we have at least fifty thousand for the Central Park. Let's, we could take the Central Park out of infrastructure, put, use Main Street CRA funds, use Main Street CRA funds for the Memorial Drive Lights, which is not gonna be the full one eighty if we get some significant discounts on that lighting. I feel like throw both of those into the CRA rather than using infrastructure funds.
Well, we have, we have about six million dollars in infrastructure. What are we planning on using that for? We're not gonna use it for these type of projects.
So what, infrastructure includes what kind of projects?
The lighting on Memorial?
Anything related to public safety and parks and water, wastewater. So anything to do with the fire department, anything to do with the police department.
Anything to do with wastewater that we have sufficient issues with. So I feel like if we can pay, the infrastructure can be used throughout the entire city, correct?
Yes.
Not just a particular district. CRA funds can only be used in a specific spot. So I feel like we should take the money that is most exclusive as far as the rules and the areas that it can be used in and use it for the things that we can use it for, which opens up the additional funds to fix our water and wastewater and our public safety and-
And the CRA is not gonna all, our CRA only, um probably the Main Street CRA is the only one that's gonna probably provide what they need. The South Side CRA doesn't nearly make what Main Street. So if we need certain things done on the South Side, the CRA is not always enough money. So why shouldn't we be able to go to the instru, uh in- infrastructure and, and pull it out? Like she said, we got money there. Why can't we use it?
I say use the CRA funds first. If infrastructure-
Used it first?
If infrastructure can be used for parks and other areas, then if there are no funds left over in the CRA, then we can start considering using those other funds. But I feel like for right now, use the most restricted funds first and then branch out into the ones that we have a little more wiggle room with.
Well, I don't know if you know this, uh you didn't make the CRA's um South Side um meeting. That was more that the CRA wanted on the South Side, but we didn't necessarily get it. And so if we had or got everything that we wanted, then we would've had to go to the infrastructure um funding anyway.
Well, I understand that, but there, there's a lot of wants and then there, and there's needs and-
We had to determine, we, we narrowed it down. We had to determine out of whatever, however many things that we listed, we had to determine what we thought that we needed or we wanted.
Right.
We already eliminated some things already.
Right, which so did the airport, so did Main Street. It's not an issue of where. That's why I said, what projects are listed in infrastructure that can be co- covered under any CRA fund? Any. I don't care what CR, CRA fund it comes from, but use the infrastructure funds to cover it or use the CRA funds to cover it first, then go to infrastructure.
Is that what we did, Melanie?
No, we've got, like Danielle said, we've got fifty thousand for the Central Ave improvements in infrastructure and we've got eight thousand for the Align McWhite Shade Cell and we've got the one eighty for um the streetlights on Memorial in infrastructure, not in CRA.
So my question to you, Melanie, is that when we did allo, you know, allocate, you know, South Side to say that all the things that we wanted, when we got all of those, which, which we didn't get all of them, but we got what Danielle, Dr. Kelly and that meeting said that pretty much that we could get for what we had, did we use all the CRA budget? Is, is all of it gone?
Yes.
Okay, it's all gone.
Right, it's all allocated at this point, but that's what I'm saying.
You mean going forward?
No, what I'm saying is some, some of those projects are easy, pretty much guaranteed to get put in and actually implemented. Some of those things are gonna be harder to implement. So why not use the hundred and eighty thousand? That would be an easy project that could get done quickly, a quick turnaround. Why not allocate the hundred and eighty for that? And then if we need to revisit, like she said, it's a living document, that, this budget, and then tap into infrastructure.
With, with what we wanted that was left over? Is that what you're saying? Like say, let me make sure you're understanding, Brittany. Make sure I'm understanding.
So what I'm saying is you, you guys wanted some things.
Right.
So Jessica basically said, okay, well, how about fifty for this one, fifty for that one? That leaves ninety-one for lights cuz that balances, cuz with the CRA budget, you're supposed to show that you're spending everything that you have. Right? So you have to balance it. It has to say zero at the end. So I feel like she took the amount and we split it among several different projects. But it doesn't have, that doesn't mean those things are gonna cost that.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't mean that they're all gonna, they, they can all happen like right now. When you're talking about building um docks and things like that, sometimes you've got environmental protection people that you got to deal with. There's a lot of red tape sometimes with some of those kind of projects. So that's what I'm saying, use the one eighty for this guaranteed project that they already have quotes on that I feel like could be implemented very quickly.
Mm-hmm.
Then for other projects later, if it comes to a point where those projects are ready to go forward, then dip into infrastructure funds, but I don't know why we would dip into infrastructure funds.
I, I, I thought you was trying to eliminate them. As long as we're not gonna eliminate them and we can still go to the inf- infrastructure fund and we can get it from there to still implement the, the projects. That's what we said.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I, I, I can do that. I mean, it makes sense.
All right, everybody's happy.
See what a good debate does.
All right, we're, we're over time by two minutes. So is there anything last minute on the-
Yes, so I just want clarification. We are removing the grant um coordinator position from the budget. We are moving the memorial lights, the Central Ave and the Shade Cell from infrastructure to CRA.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question? So in special project CRA, what are we eliminating to put those projects in here?
I would say tweak the dollars that you have in there.
We're about to talk about that right after we close this meeting. It's how we have that meeting next. All right, anything else on the budget? Good? All right.
Are we still at one eighty for the um fire assessment? Are we keeping that?
One eighty, six mils and twenty-eight bucks.
Correct, that is what the budget is based on.
Yep. All right, anything else to go to the CRA board meeting?
The special meeting.
Special workshop. Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing the opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
And then we will begin the CRA board meeting.